Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go to roll call please, Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller-Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Felton.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Huddeman.
Here.
Okay. Do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
Make that motion.
Councilmember Mueller-Bauer makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll second, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes, thank you. On the consent agenda, I want to hold out two items C and D just for clarification and explanation on some items. Other than that, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda barring items C and D?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Huddeman makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, on the motion, on, on, let me see here, I want to get to, uh, on the HVA, um, I read everything about it, I'm sure the county did too, uh, I saw the total amount was six hundred fifty thousand nine hundred, but I imagine that's split up by the whole county, right, our portion, so, do we have a number, Joe, of what our portion is?
Yeah, so it's split up by not only the cities, but also the school districts, and has highlighted on here, um, for twenty twenty, it's seventeen hundred forty-nine dollars. She indicates in the cover memo that it's going to stay the same, um, as the lease payments are now, um, and they may forego the lease payments on this older system, um, they're still working on some of those details, but it's-
But that's seventeen forty-nine a year then?
Yeah, that's what she has.
Okay, for a year.
On the payment schedule, yeah.
Okay, and then if you go to, um, page seventeen of the packet, and then, uh, item number one and number two, I'm, I'm thinking that number one is the actual purchase of the pro- the pro- the, uh, equipment, and number two is the maintenance of the equipment, is that what I gathered on that? Page seventeen of the packet, number, City of St. Francis approval for the purchase and support of replacement ballot marking devices. Cause the wording's almost the same, except it says voting equipment, and the second number it says, uh, operation and maintenance, so one's purchase and one's maintenance of it?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not, I have a different numbering system than you, so if you're talking-
It's right next to page after the C change.
Yeah.
Cool.
Will we go one, from our, our agenda, item four C, two, three, four, fifth page.
So your question is, it's for both the purchase and the operation and maintenance?
Right, number one must be for the purchase, and number two must be for the maintenance.
Correct, and that would be the same as what we would do now, I mean, that's the same agreement.
So that seventeen forty-nine, that includes both those items in there, maintenance and-
It should, you know, um, and I'm kind of basing this off of what she has in here and the actual budget that we set aside, it's a minimal cost for election equipment, um, and so that seventeen forty-nine that she has, that seems about right with where we're at, you know?
I mean, I, I saw the machines and all that, I think it's a great idea, cause they're lighter and more movable, you know, you can move around easier and deal with them, so, versus the older machines, and they're outdated anyways from two thousand sixteen,
That's sixteen.
From what I al- what I already got, right?
Yeah, they're, they're older.
Two thousand and six, right?
Yeah.
They're outdated places, so they're fourteen years old already, so, um, any other questions by council on this item? Just some clarification I wanted to bring to your attention.
Well, my question was, um, and I know it's a small amount, but we, we consolidated our voting location, so are we cutting our machines in half, or do we have to still have two, one on each side of the room?
Yeah, we still have, we're, we still have two precincts, but just in the same rooms, so it's like-
Cause you have east and west, right, yeah, so that's, that's what that is, that is your question, right?
Yeah, and the other one was on page twenty-nine of the packet, and I, and I see the seventeen forty for twenty twenty, mine was that purchase two thousand value, and I compared everything from Oak Grove as far as population percentage, they have more than us on every column except for that last one, and I don't understand what that last column really means.
Okay, so that purchase two thousand is what you're saying?
Yeah, and ours is ninety-four nineteen, and Oak Grove's is eighty-two, two-two-four.
Yeah. And they've got more population based on-
They got eight thousand people, they got two point four, we got two point one, every price is just a little higher, because I'm assuming it's a percentage of population, but why is that last column, why isn't ours just a little bit under the air to?
Right, cause we got, based on this population, seventy-two nineteen for us, eight thousand thirty-one for them.
Yeah, and their, you know, their twenty twenty price is, um, nineteen forty-five it looks like, and ours is seventeen forty-nine. I, I just don't understand that column.
No, that's a good question, um-
That's a really good question.
This, this was prepared by the county, uh, so if that's an error or something, which it very well could be, I guess I don't know, um, yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, he's right though, I mean, and, and we're about almost, almost twelve hundred dollars higher than there, on the last column, it's good, so, something you might want to just check with them.
Yeah, we can sort of go for sure and-
You know, sort out, but I mean, but he's right, if you look at all the columns between Oak Grove and us, we are lower than them in everyone except that one. I'm not sure why that is. It could just be-
Then you'd have to be the only one, you know, then wouldn't be, um-
No, I went, I went over every column for them, and they're the, you know, they're closest, closest population to us, you know, their, their population proportion is two point four-three, ours is two point one-eight.
Right, but as you said-
Their value every year since has been a, just a little bit above us.
Yep. But then you got the portion, proportion of population, two point one-eight percent of us, like you mentioned, and two point four-three for them, so, that is a difference. So is this something you should check on?
Sure.
Any other questions by council on this matter?
I have one question, Mayor, again, this is for ADA compliant type machines, it's not for, uh, so we're, we're getting just two, two of these machines is, was our, what we need to perform our, our elections.
Yeah, they're ordering in bulk for the county and we're getting here to-
So this will make it more accessible for ADA, right?
And we didn't own the old ones then, and they were leased situation, we just turned them back in and it gets all leased, so, from what I understand. Alright, that's all I have for you.
This is leased as well too, right, kinda? Yeah, same.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify, do we want to figure out with that nine four one nine versus eighty-two twenty-four, or do we just approve it and just see if that was an error? I, it's something that we need, and I don't want to mess the timeline up for, hey, guess what, we're not voting in November!
No, no, but I, I feel like-
St. Francis is having a special election.
Well, there's twelve hundred bucks just, actually, so I, I think we should at least check it out.
Yeah, yeah, do you want us to, um, all we can go about it two ways, either we approve it, or we come and figure out what's going on here, or we, we just tail it to April twenty, if we had that much time? That would be correct, those are your two options.
Okay, so-
Which I, I don't know what the timeline is on this, I gotta be honest, I don't-
Well, it could just be a calculating error on their end, I mean, I don't know how they, I don't know how they could take a smaller percentage, uh, and proportional, and come out with a higher amount, okay, then. Cause it's off by, um, a, a quarter of a point, point two five percent, which is a quarter of a point, that's where it is.
Yeah, I don't know why that would be.
You know, and does that mean, is the machine in two thousand, or is that what we paid in two thousand, and maybe, in two thousand we were above Oak Grove as far as population, you know what I mean? I want to know what that looked like in two thousand.
Now you say that, I bet that's the, um-
What the purchase-
Census of two thousand, cause they have the two thousand ten census on there, no, but I bet that's the, uh, two thousand census. And split.
Well, hold a second. Let's ask Google. What was the population of St. Francis, Minnesota in the year two thousand? I said, I said San, it's St. Francis, let's see what that is. What was the population of St. Francis, Minnesota in the year two thousand? Come on, I don't know. It was like, we dropped twelve hundred people?
Well, yeah, I think it's the cost based on two thousand census, probably like more there.
What was the population of St. Francis, Minnesota in the year two thousand? Something just needs to work here today. Something went wrong. I like that, yeah, yeah, it's electronics. Alright, well, it probably was based on that. But every sign I've ever seen with Oak Grove is they've always had more than we have, and it could have been different back in two thousand.
Yeah, it could have been split somehow. You know, I, I don't know how many precincts they have in Oak Grove, cause I don't know that either.
Well, you know something, I, I think we can pass it and just question that from them on calculation, I think would be the way to go. Because if that's based on population back in two thousand, I mean, you're talking twenty years later, that, you know, that might have been just that, 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 I would agree, I would think that could be possible, so, um, I myself don't have a problem, you know, you know?
Well, I get something, you know, if we can clarify it.
Okay, just for clarification purposes, okay? Okay, and then, anything else from council on that? Okay, and then, um, the one question I had, um, getting over to, um, let's see, on the, on the COVID nineteen, on the updates, okay? It was on page one here, on the, is it on page? Let's see, it says here about, I don't want to get there, um, there's a term here called primary stressors.
I Googled that too.
Yeah, can you tell me what that is? Primary stressors?
That's on, on the first page of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, first page, they have seven. Yeah.
Well, are we talking about my report at the end, not the COVID nineteen on the consent?
Right. Are you asking about the COVID nineteen on the-
The COVID update.
Update.
Okay.
That was going to be in my report at the end.
Okay, so that's, that's, that has nothing to do with this COVID update here that we have?
Yep, there's two COVID updates, one is the, kind of the policy following the federal guidelines on the consent agenda, and the other one's a report from me, that was I wanted to add.
Alright, so you could explain the stressor?
Yeah.
Primary stressors, okay, cause I just want to know if I'm in stress.
If I'm in stress, Tom.
Okay, um, so, okay, we'll get that down there, so that's fine on that, um, alright, so, do I have a, a motion, uh, to adopt on the consent agenda item C and D?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Robert makes that, Bauer makes that motion, I have a second.
Second.
Councilor Mueller-Bauer makes a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you. Obviously, no meeting open to public, special business, the public hearings have been postponed, the twenty twenty street reconstruction and water meter improvement project postponed until April twentieth, two thousand twenty, the trail easemification is postponed to a date to be determined. Moving on to, um, let's see here, we'll move on to orders two-six-three, second series temporarily establishing a moratorium on auto sales, second reading.
Mayor Council, right before you is the second reading for the moratorium for the auto sales, this was discussed two weeks ago, it will be published for the thirty day comment, this will put a moratorium on it for thirty days, or for twelve months, and then during that time, we will work with our comprehensive plan to get those ordinances updated, and they'll be open at the same time. I'll happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you, Kate, I, I don't have any questions myself, is council, Joe?
No, I don't have any questions, I think it's a good idea to help guide the development, you know, this area.
I think it helps us guide our, the St. Francis forward plan and not plan, Kevin?
No, no questions, I agree also, but we don't want to overabundance, and I don't want to interfere with what, um, St. Francis Forward had in mind.
Sarah?
No, I'm agreeing.
Rob?
No questions.
Okay. So it's an ordinance for a roll call, do I have a motion to adopt orders two-six-three, second series temporarily establishing moratorium on auto sales, second reading, do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Huddeman makes a second, Joe, roll call on that one?
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller-Bauer?
Aye.
Mayor Felton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Huddeman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to item B, geographic information systems, GIS provider request for proposals.
Mayor Council, right before you is a request to release an RFP to the city's, uh, GIS system. Currently, we have an outdated system that was originally administered by Bolton Mink. Since their departure in two thousand seventeen, that system has sat vacant, it hasn't been updated. Staff in each department, especially public work staff, are very dependent on this system, as it gives all this specific city infrastructure, um, allows us to keep track of the maintenance, it keeps the curb stop, so all of those day-to-day activities that they really depend on. So, we're thinking in this market right now, it would be good to get this out, because businesses are, are at a point where they would be able to do something like this fairly easily. We would put out an RFP, we would see what we get in, um, and hopefully, uh, comparing to us and other cities in our area, there's, there's some nice systems out there right now. One of the biggest questions I know, um, I directed you to East Bethel during their process of a new GIS system, they did create a system that was open to the public, um, it doesn't allow them to see maybe all of our infrastructure, but did allow them to at least review their properties and some of the details as well. So that's one thing council may want to consider, um, but otherwise, I am happy to an- answer any questions, the GIS, or the GIS RFP is attached, and I can definitely answer anything or, or explain it further if you wish.
No, for myself, um, I'm glad we're taking out the hands of Bolton and Mink, I think that's, otherwise we'll have to continue paying them to update, and we, we severed that relationship, and this totally severs it, so I think that's a good idea. For myself, I'm for this, uh, and I agree with you on that, on that, one way you're talking about that one city, St. Bethel you said, um, letting the, letting people have, be able to look at their properties, but not our whole infrastructure, I like that idea. So to me, I'm fine with it, Joe, do you have any comment?
I have to agree a hundred percent, I'm visible to everything you said.
Okay, um, Kevin?
Yeah, I have a couple questions, um, something like this, I've used the Anoka County G, uh, GIS, why isn't there a, and again, I'm a novice at this stuff, but why not a GP with the county to use a subset or some, some portion of theirs that they use when you get on there? I like the infrastructure part, knowing where our sewer and water etc. is going, but why don't, why isn't something like that available? And is there, and we're not using it?
Currently, it's not, each city has their own GIS system, so Anoka County hasn't expanded into the city networks, and I don't know if it's more of an administrative reason, um, because they've got their own provider with theirs, and ours is a system that would require, um, kind of a constant update with the infrastructure, but the base of our system does start with their system, because it is that property rap- property records information that feeds it to kind of continue it. So I think that is, is the base of what each city uses to create theirs, but it ends up, each city is, is responsible for their own, so.
Um, what would be the annual expense estimated, or what was the past annual expense when we had, uh, the previous provider, and what do you anticipate the new expenses to be for something like that?
So, looking at, um, another city, their expenses-
Just approximate, I don't-
Yeah, I was trying to get, uh, so they had a first, so one city comparable with one of the bigger providers, they had first year of expense of about twenty-four thousand, but just over twelve thousand a year for an ongoing. Um, I'm not sure what, um, East Bethel, you know, pays directly or some of these other surrounding cities, so I think, you know, between ten and fifteen thousand a year may be our expense, and it, it'll depend on what level of maybe extras or features, so once we have that RFP and kind of dissect, you know, do we need a, do we want or need a Cadillac versus, um, where we're kind of sitting now? Our current expenses, we're not being built anything with the Bolton Mink system, and I believe some of those expenses were built either wrapped in the projects, or there isn't a real clean path as to what we were paying Bolton Mink, so, um-
Would we need an additional person to do, uh, I didn't notice in there, we don't currently have a person, and there was something mentioned about personnel, do we have to add an individual, or to load all this stuff up and get started, and then maintain and add to the pack?
No, uh, the, the RFP would be a request to, to have that third party company be, the, um, administrator and the maintenance of it.
Okay.
It is a very technical program, so, I mean, to have staff in-house would be, would be difficult, so, and that's, there's a handful of the engineering firms that, that provide these services, and they provide the staff with these software services.
Alright, and then to cover these expenses, do, does your department have, uh, do we have miscellaneous monies? Is your money set aside for something like this now, or this would be a new, something would come up on the future expenditures?
I think it would get built into the twenty twenty-one budget, I mean, we have to see what the costs are, and then as we talk about budget in June, it would kind of fold into there, see how it fits in the CIP as well, kind of an unplanned thing that we would have to make ready for, probably.
Okay, and we haven't done this previously because of just the change, of just other things going on, other things stuck on the stove, so to speak.
Correct, this is, this is a, it's a big endeavor, and it, you know, to, to give up our current system, but at the same time, you know, in our current GIS system, we don't have any of the infrastructure that was pulled through River's Edge, we're missing everything that was pulled into Oak Grove.
Cause we got updates.
We haven't had any updates, so even when we do, um, mailings for our land use applications, we're required to hit that three hundred and fifty feet, well, because that system is not being updated, we're starting to get letters back, so it is really starting to kind of backlog on us on the other side now that we're three years into this, these properties are changing over and we're adding those lines, and none of that is being put into our current system, so.
The stuff that's in the system now, and I suppose we'll have to ask each potential vendor of that, but will it be not like the water meter situation where we got some antiquated piece of hoo-ha, and then we show them this, and they go, oh, boy, this is gonna, you know what I'm saying?
I do, uh, um, our current provider, or with Bolton Mink, their, their system is one that cities are still using, so I don't believe this is antiquated, I think our information is antiquated in some aspects, but I think the system itself, we should be able to, to pull over a lot of what's in there, so.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Just to add to this, um, our office usually re- uh, reviews the software agreements, and so for Anoka County, they've got their own specific license, they are probably prohibited, and that's what we generally see with everybody, is that once you get a vendor in, you have a license to that, and you can't pass that on to another jurisdiction. That vendor could also bid on the RFP, but then we would get our own license, and they're very-
Unless there's so many users on that particular license.
Correct, which of course is correct.
There's just one right now.
Yep.
Basically like software, there.
Right, yep, correct.
Rob here, you're good.
That kind of answered my question.
Okay, good, thank you, Sarah?
I was just gonna ask Steve on that, because I know, like, um, so can, can, or maybe Kate probably knows this, can residents come to, to City Hall and request, like, a large map of the city, so they get all the house numbers, cause I know you can do that at Anoka County, you go in there and you say, I need the cities of Bethel, East Bethel, now, you know, whatever ones you want, you got to pay for them, but they print out huge maps, and they have a lot of detail on those maps, so, um, you know, hopefully, in some way, shape, or form, they would, I mean, cause a lot of that work is already done, they do it every year, cause you can go in and you can order those maps, you know? And so, they, I think they have quite a bit of the information that we're gonna need, so hopefully, you know, if we, and I suppose it depends, if we go with the same vendor, we probably would, you know, not that we necessarily have to, but if we did, I would assume that that would free them up to, you know, they're already gonna be one step ahead, cause they have it all.
They'll have a portion of it, because, again, all of our infrastructure itself is, is very local, so that, that isn't something Anoka County sees at all, any of our land use pieces or our infrastructure pieces. As far as when they order those maps, they are doing that at the county level, so that typically doesn't come to the city at all, um, but-
Care to people come to this, can ask for that, I mean, I care, yes?
They could, it would be a data request, we would, we would have to see how that's managed, but, you know, as of this point, when they want the list, they go to the county, and that's the most current, most accurate as well, cause that's for all the records.
That is probably best for them, you know, because it's the bigger scale.
Right.
Versus what we can do local here. But this is one of the things we face with software, you know, I mean, you're seeing software today become more subscription, not lot, not one-time purchases for a lifelong, uh, you know, ability to use it. You're seeing Microsoft three sixty-five is one of those, and so on and so forth, so, um, and like I say, breaking away from Bolton and Mink, I mean, we made the break, we should keep the break going, and, and we don't need to deal with that. This is where our engineering company, uh, all our departments will be using it, so it, it, it's, it's an expense you don't want to spend, but you need to expand it, I put it like that, so, council, any other questions?
Another question I would have is, so if that was kind of through Bolton and Mink, and if that was obviously part of their cost, something they probably worked on separately, then, is that something that, like, Hawkinson Anderson don't incorporate that, or just like?
I don't think they have a GIS platform.
That's just like an extra feature type of thing that Bolton Mink would do and kind of bill you for it?
I don't know that Bolton Mink would even say this, but they'll just did it as our engineer, and I don't think Hawkinson uses someone else, don't they?
I believe they-
They don't have their own platform, they buy it from someone else, if I remember correctly from Craig, they're just not really in this business.
Uh, that makes sense, those are security, figures are in an area and kind of do all that stuff too, if they maybe have something.
But it says their public works engineers utilize this software to create and update data on the city's public infrastructure, so.
Correct, so right now, even our Bolton Mink system, the city has a password, we have a main password, so we're able to share that with HKGI and Hawkinson Anderson, um, BGS, you know, we have that ability to, but we're just getting to a point now where we're sharing outdated information, so.
Without the updates, it's worthless, yeah, and that's a fact, so, any other questions?
Did I, do have, did they owe us any updates in two thousand, I mean, since two thousand seventeen, have we paid for this information? Even though we're not a current client of theirs, don't they, is there any obligation for them to, to have any of that stuff updated? Or could we have used it if we wanted to? Or I know the relationship was, uh, worse than this, but-
Contract has another contract.
Yeah, we, we could have entered into another contract to, to, we haven't paid them anything for it since two thousand seventeen, and I think if we wanted to have a contract with them, we could have, or, and they may even bid on this RFP, being that they have our base system.
There's nothing proprietary that they would have built in or had, uh, on that, that we can't, well, I guess we won't know till then, a new vendor might look at it, then they do.
Yeah, hopefully we don't uncover too many secrets.
Well, you know, the door won't open, you know?
The hidden secrets are Bolton and Mink, it's everyone, I mean.
Okay.
So, yeah.
No, it's in Bolt. Like their change, like their change cards they used to come back at, and everything else, no. Any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
So, direction is all you really need on this?
Um, I don't know, do you?
Are, are formal to release the RFP, is that?
A motion to approve the release of the RFP.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, uh, approve the, the release of the, of the RFP?
I'll make that motion.
Councilmember Mueller-Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second? Councilor Huddeman makes a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to the liquor store expansion update, um, you know, I see, what I've seen in here is, um, when, this became down to a non-conformity issue, uh, because the original envelope was not inconformity, and the original design that I worked with Miles and John with, continued that non-conformity forward to the new addition, so, uh, when Joe brought that up to me, um, I reached out to Miles at Pearl Architecture, and said to him, well, instead of going to the backside, why don't we try to the, to the west side, you know, east side, yeah, the, the side of it, why don't we try to go to the north side of it, cause we have the property to do that? He did, and because the costs are much cheaper on CAD than when you're actually on a construction to change these things, there's an extra cost there, I see, but like I say, if we started with the old project and got on site and then had to change things, it would be a lot more expensive. So, we did the change, as it turns out, as you read it here, on, on, uh, item number two, the redesign did result in a more functional design. So what happened was, the forty by sixty-three became forty-four by fifty-five, so it lost, gained four feet on the width, but lost eight feet on the length, but still nominal, very nominal. But what it does is, in my opinion anyways, and I want to get feedback from council, this is staff of course, um, and I talked to Joe Cohen earlier about this, but what it does is, the envelope of the existing structure, Dave correctly wrong, the envelope of the existing structure isn't a non-conformity, but the new addition will be conformant, it will be a twenty-five foot setback and through all the guidelines and specifications that we require in today's construction. So to me, to change a PUD, a planning and development, create that or whatever, or change anything to make this work, I don't really see the necessity of that, because the existing building is, we're not extending the non-conformity, we're, we're letting that ride stay with me, stay with the existing building, if you follow me, but the new structure is inconformity. So, and I'm, you understand what I'm saying, I mean, the new structure is inconformity, the old structure is not, okay? We're not continuing with the original plan that would continue the non-conformity, it doesn't, it doesn't continue any non-conformity, it just, the remodeling is, is in compliance. So do I see a need for it to be, go to public hearings and everything else like that? So do I see a need for it to be, go to public hearings and everything else like that? I don't myself.
Yeah, we're gonna try to avoid, um, changing rules or anything like that to make this happen. And I think there's a chance that we may be able to do it as is and insert a little more and try and land.
Cause I worry about opening up a can of worms, you know what I mean? I mean, if you start changing things for our needs and then residents come in and go, what about their needs? Then individual property owns that. But because, again, the property will be in conformity on the new addition. And from what I, I talked to Joe earlier, it seems like, uh, uh, the building when it was purchased by the city for the liquor meeting was always in non-conformity from day one, that you recall.
Yeah, I mean, I think whenever it was built, it met the rules to those data. And then there's some speculation that the road widened over there and maybe the right-of-way kicked into it and made it not.
And it was a sidewalk and everything.
All kinds of unclear information as to how exactly we got here. But, uh, we're certainly trying to find the path of least resistance. I think, um, if this project still is kind of on hold or routine enough, I know that another part of this discussion is doing work or not, or bidding out. But I mean, we do have some time to sort all that stuff out and try and, we can maybe work one way or another.
Right, but what I'm saying to you is because again, again, the existing envelope is non-conformity. We're not adding on to that non-conformity. We're not creating an addition that is less than twenty-five feet setback and maintains the non-conformity. We are correcting it on the new addition. So to me, that makes sense to me. And I talked to, when I talked to Miles today, um, there's a timeline under six months, once the contract's signed and all that. But he said it looks like about a, about a five month, I think a little, probably a little less, uh, construction period. But the, the key is, even if we start from a later council, uh, the key is, as you know, through construction, to get it enclosed. Once the footings are in, the walls are up and the roof is on, working inside is a lot different in the heated, uh, area, in the heated atmosphere. So to me, and I've worked outside subsurges many times, I assure you, and so I mean, you get to a point where the quality of work goes down and, uh, it's just a lot more expense too, by the way. But if we get this issue, if we get this, if what, we may not be done in the timeframe we desire because of what's going on in the world today. But if we start this, let's say in May or June, we still can be enclosed before winter sets in. And then all that work will be inside and we can do that. But then we'll have the structure, roof on, walls up, footings in, everything done like that. And I think that's, as, as Miles said, that's the best thing, will save us costs, um, and will get better quality work done. Which I agree, I, I would never do a winter build if I didn't have to. So you're not heating footings, you're not heating the structure, and you have your subs are cold and you don't wanna work in cold. So, um, that's just my thought, but I don't, I don't myself, and I'm just bringing this up to council, I don't see a reason to put this out to public hearings and all this because again, the addition is inconformity. By going to the north side, and according to, uh, if you look at the plan, by the way, it gets much more floor space for John. John worked with Miles on it and they both agreed this was a better plan. Sometimes, um, you come out with something and, and, and through other feedback or other situations, you find a better plan. It seems like it is. And the cost, by the way, um, there's the thirty-four hundred forty dollars of the CAD, but as I explained, if we were to go under construction and make changes, that would be a lot more costly time-wise and money-wise. And second of all, um, the cost will increase from the six forty-two up to seven ten, which is just slightly under sixty-eight thousand dollars. But as I mentioned to Miles, and I want to get your intake input, um, if this is a one-time shot and we do it right and we never have to do it again, it, it may be worth it if we don't have to remodel this building again. If we get the, well, he's done some changes with the coolers and that, maybe for bigger floor space or accessibility for deliveries and everything and, uh, with the coolers like it is. Their opinion, John's is that it will be much more functional. So Rob, let me start with you. Do you have any comments on this?
Well, I like the idea of, um, you know, not trying to, to make a remodel based off of non-conforming already because then the city sets that standard that, you know, if it's our building, we're willing to keep it non-conforming. I do like the idea of, of making it conforming. My understanding is the liquor store wasn't the liquor store when it was first built, right? It was something else. So something put it there, right?
According to Joe, right, and it was, it was changed inside, what the envelope did change just inside.
So how they got approved allegedly the first time non-conforming, um, the price keeps ticking up on me, um, but I think it's a, it is a good move for the city to, to expand that, to, uh, have a greater market for the city of St. Francis. I think we can, uh, I would, I would move forward, I think.
Sarah?
Yeah, I think we should continue to move forward too. I agree. We can't, I agree with what Rob said about, we can't continue to be non-conforming, but if we're making it to how it should be now, that's better. And the longer we wait, depending on how things go, the more things are gonna go up in cost as well. It's just gonna happen until, um, you know, I think we should. I would just like to add on that, that, you know, really, if you have questions about this people, email and call us. Again, don't ask questions on these, but just let us know, cause we'll answer it for you, you know?
Right, we have nothing to hide.
No, no, and, and, uh, we, we are transparent with our money, so I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. If we're not hiding anything from you, so if you have questions and you come to us, we can get you the answers.
Yeah, and by the way, the increase is about a ten percent increase, about ten, ten and a half percent. So it's not the, you know, if, if we were talking about a twenty-five to fifty percent range, I think we'd have to look at numbers, you know? But, but like I say, again, the key is, if this, if we remodel this one time and we have to deal with it again, then it's a good investment because there's a payback on this and there's money coming to it from the city. I mean, I mean, just three weeks ago, I think it was about three weeks ago when Joe told me that John said he did two weeks of sales in three days. I mean, they're making money. So, I mean, right now, I, you know, toilet paper, guns and ammo and liquor, that's the big thing today, so changing times, I guess, so. Kevin, you have anything to say on this?
Yeah, I do, and I, and now you guys can correct me wherever you think you need to, but originally it was four sixty-five, then now it's six forty-two, now it's seven ten. Item B, uh, they say the cooler, I thought the cost of the cooler was underestimated myself and, and some of the other council members took it lightly or didn't really anticipate that. Which brings me to this Brits quote of eighteen thousand dollars for additional coolers. Uh, ironically, it's the same company that Miles Brits must be relative, I don't know if that's an arm's length situation.
It's a coincidence. It's a coincidence.
Is that many Brits is running around?
Yeah, it's, he's just, he was, yeah, he's doesn't, he's not related to them, yeah.
Well, nevertheless, again, this started out as, this is the only thing that we have that makes, uh, money for the city other than our taxes and permits. I don't know, now with this advent of a, uh, uh, virus situation in front of our city with, uh, some things will be coming back in the coming six, eight, ten, twelve months or longer of things that we needed to have more preparedness for, whether it be a viral related or otherwise. I'm back to, I, I don't really agree with the, well, I, I'll, uh, add on to this. Now there's ten thousand five hundred for fixtures and equipment, which was left out on an earlier quote, why? And then a random twelve thousand dollars additional spread throughout the quote now, why? So that's twenty-two thousand. I guess my overall opinion at this point, maybe hold on to this until we know, uh, how the reserves are or this, or scale back and focus on the storage capabilities, which was really the original intent of this. I realize we have an overhead door that's not functioning, cause you can't move, put anything in there. We have stuff in the restroom facilities that is used to dry storage. Um, I really don't believe in my heart that this is a go-to destination, more other, more, other more than just a convenience shop, which we need to, which, and, and we need to, uh, actually enjoy the revenue that it creates for us. I mean, it's a luxury that we have, this liquor store. It's, it's truly a luxury. If we didn't have it, we wouldn't have this money for extra things. And they're not extra things, but necessities that we hadn't planned for or things that pop up. I'm for scaling back to, to look at the dry storage situation. I don't know about the cooler, uh, the additional of, of coolers. And you're in the refrigeration, you know as well, it's not just, those things don't just move around like a, an, an end table. It's a lot of time, effort and refrigeration with, and breaking down and reclaiming to move this up. I think we need to get back to basics. I mean, at, at, at one of the earlier ones, even before the four sixty was like, was it two eighty or something like that and then went to four sixty? I think it's, I think it's off the rails myself. I think we ought to re, look at it again. I'm not opposed to doing it. Um, I wanna make it functional. I want to increase our profits. But again, you know, you may have a fancy car and stuff, but it's not gonna get you to work any quicker. I mean, it, it's not a go-to place for me. It's a convenience. It's nice to have. We have grocery store across the street. We got a bank. And this, um, I think we should take a simple, like, uh, second look at it. I'm not against doing it, but let's go back to the functionality of why do we need it? What do we need it for and where are we really hurting? Um, I don't see it as a, um, uh, you know, total wines and more type place. This is St. Francis, Minnesota. We're just, we're plain folks, you know, you and I. And, uh, the people that come through here are hunters and fisherpeople and, and vacationers and whatnot. And as far as wine tasting and things that's gonna go on, that's all cool. You can still do that with something out in space, but if it be dry space, it doesn't cost a lot of infrastructure and to set it up. I want it to look nice and it, right now it does for most liquor stores. There's places in Coon Rapids and Frigga that look like crap holes compared to what we have there. Really walk in there and I, and nothing gives mom and pop establishments and stuff, but, um, this is, uh, stand alone, this stands above and beyond what some of the other establishments have, so. I, I'm really for scaling back here. I mean, four sixty-five, we were kind of hemming and hawing, but seven ten now. I mean, like you said, it's ten percent over the six forty-two, so that, that's really my piece in a nutshell. I, I think we ought to go back to basics. What do we want? How much do we need? What, what do we want to make it functional? And then as far as the marketing and the maneuverability inside, that's all John's doing, you know? Give him a bigger campground, he can, you know, quite some more campers for crying out loud. But I think we got a lot of amenities here and a lot of things that we might not need to still make it a successful and a revenue generating business for us.
Alright, thank you. Joe?
I have to agree with a lot of the questions that Kevin brought up. The sixty-eight thousand or roughly sixty-eight thousand closer to me, that's a big shocker for me. I don't understand, you're getting less footage, which I'm not a builder, I'm sure there are things, um, that I love with that.
You're gaining freedom, but you're losing eight on social, you had a four.
But you, you're, you're losing a little bit of square footage, but paying sixty-eight thousand more for it and then all these other quotes, why weren't they in the original quote? The other question I have that bothers me, and again, I'm not trying to throw shade at anybody or, or whatever. I don't understand, how do you, I guess with the design features and, and when it came up as non-conforming and I talked to Coleman about it, and I was kind of, I was shocked for one, cause it's like, okay, that's nice, you know? Always, always good to hear those things. Um, and then you, you know, you go from there and it's like, okay, if that's what we're doing and we're, we're trying to make it conforming or whatever, that's great. That's always a plus. But my question goes back to when you're designing it, then at what point? I don't know, I mean, as a designer, I mean, would he, with the original designs and the money that we spent on the designs to begin with, where is that as far as making, designing something that's conforming to begin with? You get what I'm saying? The original designs, when you fill it out, I mean, shouldn't you know what the parameters are to be conforming? And if we're not adding on to what's not conforming or, I'm not, that kind of throws me off still. I don't know how we can all of a sudden be conforming by doing it a different way.
How do we find out about the non-conformity?
Um, so I've been working with H K G I, um, you know, I mean, there's, there's several options out there. I think there's a, you know, is the non-conforming structure, you can't expand it period? Or you can't expand the non-conform, or you kind of like the Marisane, where you still have as more zero setback, um, extend it out with the addition? Or if you move it to twenty-five, you know, can you do that because you're not expanding the non-conforming, cut over the gray area? But, you know, there's other options, I think, um, in working with B G S and H K G I, I think, um, none of them are barriers to stop this project. It can be done. We can figure out a solution to make it go forward. I'm not entirely sure what that solution is, or you know, there's options, like the Marisane was talking about. Uh, we haven't landed on one, so I, you know, we can make it work. I think it was just we had to be committed to make it work.
I guess, I guess too, with the sixty-eight thousand difference, I don't understand, like I say, where a lot of these, like you said, the twenty-two thousand or whatever, that probably about a nowhere and so those things, that, that bothers me too. I still don't understand. I guess as a designer and as a, I would think, I guess, you tell me to design the building and it kind of goes off with what, then it's up to us to kind of figure out, yeah, that looks good or not. But we're spending a lot of money to have these designers design these things. And then at the end of the day, it's like, well, you designed it on, you know, a non-conforming building because of where it was and where it was before we even started this, which I get, we find things out later sometimes too, which isn't great, but it happens. I just don't know, I mean, does any of this fall on the designer as well for designing something that's non-conforming? That's not really his deal anyway. It's like, you told me to draw a building with more storage and I drew one, but I would just think there'd be more interaction, I guess, to kind of make sure whatever you're designing is gonna be conforming. And I don't know how much of that falls on the designer or on us as a city too. I mean, obviously there's a lot of things that we continually see from history that we all of a sudden find it out. I mean, the, the, the nice thing about the design is the design's good for basically forever, which is great. You don't have to do it right away. I'm kind of in shock with the sixty-eight thousand. I don't know, I mean, if, if costs are gonna always go up, I don't think if they're gonna go down, it's gonna be shortly. Because the way the economy is tanking right now.
Right.
Not that they're going to. I don't, you know, nobody knows what the hell is gonna happen with costs and stuff in the future, so. I don't know, I'm kind of on the fence with all of it. I just think that that ten percent's a huge, a huge deal and why some of these things were in there. I don't, I don't really understand that. I mean, like, when we're talking about the work session for hemming and hawing, like you said over, I don't remember the exact number, but I know it was a lower number.
Well, it started out two sixty or two seventy something.
Yeah, but that was for a smaller square footage.
Right.
It was for much squat, more, more.
Well, we were, at the, at the final number, we're kind of like, okay, sixty-five, can we keep it under six fifty is what we talked about.
And we can do that, by the way, that's what I mentioned to you. We don't have to put all the coolers in right away. We can move the regular, the original cooler right now, move that. We can add coolers on later on as long as you have the space. The key is the space. If you look in the building, you've been there, you're seeing, you're seeing bathrooms stocked with inventory. You're seeing hallways stocked with inventory, which is not fire safety wise, um, so there's an issue there. And, and again, uh, what you're saying about is it may be, it may be just a convenience store today, but we're doing this remodeling the plan for the future. So if suddenly liquor comes, not to sudden, not suddenly, which we have, the liquor goes in the grocery stores, we're never gonna be a total liquor. We don't, we don't, we're never gonna be that. But what I'm saying to you is, we can plan for the future by this remodel. Hopefully this remodel stretched over thirty years is nothing. But if you do it right, you can be able to be competitive to where you have larger inventory and buy in a bulk purchase, which allows you to be a destination place. So that, that's what our goal is, to become a destination place, tied in with the change to, to county road, to highway forty-seven. So with that change, traffic's closed, people see our businesses, which I don't believe they're seeing now because they're just rushing to our city. So that, all that comes into play. But do I, I say to you that once we see the plan being done right now, we stopped it, we're not doing the construction now because we don't know what COVID-nineteens was gonna put out. That's a good thing. But I'm just saying to you is, do we have to do it to the level that he does? We can hold him firm to six fifty. We can hold firm to six fifty and say, what can we get done? Space-wise, cooler-wise relocation, whatever, and then hold off on the extras, twenty-two thousand we didn't know about, the other ten, we hold off on that.
Yeah, but what the hell does that look like in the finals? I mean, do you got a big open space and, I mean?
Well, it'd be in the back. It wouldn't be in the front. The front would be, moving the cooler back gives you, if you look at the plan, if you look at the plan right now on that, on that.
You probably understand these loop plans a lot better than I do.
Well, I do, but I'm saying to you, what I'm saying to you is, you move the original cooler back, leaves you more floor space there in the front, which he doesn't have now. He has no floor space. We've all been in there. We've seen the floor space. You walk into the right, you walk in, the right is all, is the beer and the left is the wine and liquor. And then down the hallway, doing the bathrooms, there's more cases of stuff on top of everything. So I'm saying, if you move the original cooler back, you gain all that floor space, which is a key. As long as the actual, the actual new construction envelope, it allows us to add on later on, we can save some of these costs in the beginning, get the structure up, the footings, the walls and the roof on from the bigger space, the forty-four by fifty-five, and then add a cooler on later on, as long as we have the space in play. But if you don't do it right and you, and you do it minimally, then if you wanna add a cooler on, then you gotta add out beyond the envelope. You don't wanna do that, you know? It's like we talked about with the city hall and fire station. We wanna build this big enough and right so we can expand inside it without expanding the envelope. We wanna add an office on or bring another entity into our city administration years down the road. We just add an office into a space we already have, then go outside the envelope, which would be more costly. So what I'm saying to you is, we can go back, because it's not planned out on a CAD, we can go back and say to Miles, you missed this, you missed that. We wanna gain floor space, we wanna move the coolest back, we want the space to add on later on. What can we do to drive the cost back down to six fifty where we originally planned? But that four sixty-five you're talking about, the four hundred, that was for a much smaller space, which would have been a waste of money.
And I agree, and I was a buyer at six forty-two, but I thought that was turkey and, and roll. And then when you start reading some of the intricacies of what is their, you know, additional coolers and moving, the one part in there, I think it said moving coolers was not anticipa, or the cost, total cost wasn't anticipatable. That was a concern to me four sixty, weeks ago, it was a concern to me and it was kind of like, eh, no big deal, I still love.
Physically, they're not, I mean, they actually solder the stuff and move the pipe.
It's not that hard. They're sectional, just like spancrete.
Depending on the bid you get to of some company and who's bidding for it.
Right.
Cause they're locked in walls. They're, they're wall panels. And then you got the, no, you got the refrigeration and the electric. But, but I'm gonna say to you was, uh, you know, if you recall when we were doing Riverbank, you know, I recall Hawkinson Anderson saying there wouldn't be more than a ten percent increase, blah, blah, blah. I recall Ox Anderson saying, there wouldn't be more than a ten percent increase, blah, blah, blah. Five percent to ten percent, then we end up getting the sticker shock that we got. So, you know, all I can say to you is, we have professionals in places in our planning and our, and our, and our engineering and whatnot, and our staff and all that. But we're human and we can make mistakes. Um, but we are the controller of the money, okay? So like I say again, if council wants us to stick to that six fifty, I suggest to council that we at least do the forty-four by fifty-five space. And then what goes in that space, we can adjust. Like I say, do we need that second cooler? Do we need this, all that? Moving that main cooler, if you look on page ninety-two, the packet, moving that cooler back opens up all that floor space now that you didn't have before. That gives you more inventory of, of more brands and more variety out on the floor. It allows you to do some things that, and we, and by the way, we're also, by, by growing, we're bringing in a younger clientele to our area. More wine people, more, more, like with the, the seltzers now, that are on, they're, they're different, they're different tastes, I'm telling you. So where I'm just a beer guy and shot or whatever, somebody else may be something else, you know what I mean? So I'm just saying to you, we wanna grow with that, you know, as, as the area changes and, and the needs change. So that's what this is a lot important. And once again, if this is.
But I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, giving John the tools he needs to hopefully provide us more money, more purchasing power means more profits. Which then turns into more money for the city in the long term, and that's the whole purpose of doing this. I just, I got sticker shock with the number of the, the, and, and the fact you're getting less space, which again, that's, there's other things involved. Which the twenty-two thousand, obviously that wasn't accounted for before, that's a large part of that ten percent. You know, I mean, the forty, forty thousand of it or whatever, okay, well, that's a lot less than ten percent, but then it's like, where, where were these numbers in the beginning too?
Yeah, and I, like Joseph says, I, I feel a little, not misled, but like a little bait and switch there. It's gonna work, it's gonna work, you know, and like I said, I, I think we were all buyers at six forty and now it's seven-ten. So, and I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to expansion. And I think like Joe said, that make it bigger, make it better because of, in the long term, it'll pay us back. We, we already did the numbers, it'll pay us back in X amount of time because it generates X amount of money. So, uh, I, I'm not just trying to step on the whole thing, it's just some of the unknowns that are now known, it's like, oh man.
I agree with you, I agree with you, and I'm just saying to you that, that if we do this right, uh, we should never have to touch this building again. So look, if you take it on a twenty-year basis, uh, twenty years divided into this number, whether it be six hundred or whatever, you know, you're not talking, you're talking maybe three thousand dollars a year for expansion. That pays itself back because this, right now, the liquor community pays us sixty thousand dollars a year. So it's gonna pay for itself in the long term. The key is how to do it right. I, I'm for the space of it. What goes inside that space is not a question that can knock the cost back down to reality.
Well, and what are we, what are we for direction? What are we actually looking for? Is obviously the increase in cost to agree to that? Is that kinda what we're looking at?
There's, there's a couple of things. I do need approval to approve the, I think it was like forty, four hundred.
Forty-four by fifty-five.
For the design redesign, cause you need to redraw it.
Right.
And maybe just stepping back, how did we get here, just cause I, I at least have been involved with these things I've been, as they've been going on. You know, we started out with like something like eight by ten expansions.
Right.
And we were just.
Small lots, right?
And we're like, that's not enough. And so we kept getting all these iterations of these plans, we landed on the six forty-two. Which first of all, that's an estimate, so he's just trying to give you a good estimate of this is what you're getting involved.
Well, that's why we kept it at six fifty.
Yep, and he's not, there are no guarantees it's gonna come in at six, seven-ten. It could, could still come in at six forty, it could come in at seven-fifty, we don't know. But he's just trying to give you a better idea as to where you're at on this. And then just when I was involved in Miles and John, it's like, okay, we're gonna remove the cooler back and shift it, then we have room for two more. And since we're doing that, we might as well put them in there, well, because he can use more diversity, as you know, he stacks cases of beer in the middle of the store. It's like, if you put more of the cooler and since we're moving and all this, now's the time to do it. Then it's, you know, when things that pop up, well, we have two different sets of tile and then you're gonna have to retile where the cooler was. And I don't know that we're gonna be able to match these tiles, so then it's like, well, we gotta scrap the floor, right? So it's like one thing after another, if we're gonna, you know, just dress up the.
Well, that's remodeling.
Yeah, where the cashiers are, well, it's not ADA compliant, we're gonna have to reuse, I mean, it's just one thing after another, and that's kind of what happened here. Um, just because I've said, been witnessing all the issues that they did have, luckily, uh, most of them, they can work around the structural issues. But it's, it's kinda like when you change the, paint the trim in your house and then you're remodeling the vanity and then you do, it just keeps going on and on, so.
Well, it, it comes with domino effect, you know what I mean? If you do the cabinet doors on a, on a, on a, on a, on a kitchen, then you see the looks of that, then you have to change a trim to match that and so on and so forth. It, it's just a problem. I, all I'm just saying to you is, I think we should approve the forty-four by fifty-five space. I think we should approve that. I think we should approve the cooler movement, moving the original cooler back. Do I think that we can hold off on the extra coolers? Yes, maybe not put both in, maybe put one in, but have, as long as you have the space to add on later on, you can do that later on. The one thing, like I say again, as I reiterate, I, I, I reiterate, is that you don't wanna end up having a need for a second cooler and not have the space to put it in. That would be ridiculous.
Well, yeah, I think if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it right, but at the same time, like that, what are we actually committing to here? And what are we, I mean, is there gonna be a resolution? Is it just a direction for you to? What are, what are we committing to and what are we locking ourselves into at this moment?
So I would say, right now, I need approval to pay Miles that forty, uh, four grand for redesign.
Thirty-four forty-two.
Yeah, thank you. And then after that, you know, there's a, um, a timeline on here that you guys could move forward when or if you want to. And he's still just designing and giving you an estimate. Um, this, and nobody binds you to anything. We're not even gonna bid the project out, as of today. Um, and maybe it was more a update.
Well, yeah, that's what I was curious, and you're talking about building, I mean, to move forward with hypotheticals, I don't think there's an issue with that. I think it's, again, I still think there's sticker shock for ten percent.
But we're not in construction right now at all.
And when, when are the RFPs going out or whatever?
Well, we're not even talking about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um.
We're talking about building made, so that's where.
No, I said, if we could.
Right.
Now, I don't think we can. I talked to him about that, but I don't think we're gonna be able to do that. I don't think this would even start till June or July, if we're lucky, if we're lucky. And it may not even start this year.
Right.
You know, I mean, you know, the money that we have in the liquor community, we, it, it's all dependent on what happens in this economy. You know, and to me, I, thi- this is one of those things that you, you wanna do, but you don't need to do right now.
Right.
So, um, I, I would suggest that we approve the fifty, the forty-four by fifty-five space. Um, we approve the thirty-four forty-two to, for, for Miles on, on the redesign, and then we just wait.
Yeah, I think this is gonna keep coming back in front of you guys, and it's gonna say, well, we finally had it ready to go, do you want it to sit and wait more or do you guys wanna move on?
Well, and I think until we get a final number anyway, which we could end up dead in the water at that final number anyway.
Absolutely.
So.
And this comes up to a million dollars, we're done, we're not even thinking.
Well, that's why I'm just trying to clarify it as far as how far are we going along with what we're doing tonight? I mean, I still. I don't understand how the hell it goes up that much, but again, there's other things that factor into it too. But, I mean, if it's an estimate, it's an estimate, what are you gonna do? The final number is what we're gonna have to ultimately decide on when it comes to us, so I don't think, that's why I want clarification as to what are we committing to at this point?
Well, I mean, you know, like whenever I'm doing a, whenever I'm doing a bid or something like that, I'll put options, you know, I'll, I'll put down the base and then I'll say, option this, you know? Do you want this type of door covers or this type of panels? Like if you want solid doors versus hollow core doors or something like that, so I always put down the options. So what I'm saying to you, Joe, is, we could do it, agree on the space at forty-four by fifty-five, agree to the thirty-four forty-two, like I said. And then look at, have, have Miles give us some options without the new coolers, just relocate the old cooler. Give him some options to bring the price down to where we approved cap at six fifty.
I, I would say this just because I heard how all these improvements came up. And like I said, the three sets of tiles, it was gonna look terrible, you spent all this money in floor and whatever. I mean, I think a couple little hanging fruits are the contingency at ten percent and forty-eight thousand, and then running the Zayo network over there, forty-five thousand, that's a hundred grand right there. I mean, that you don't have to move forward with. Um, maybe some of the contingency, but you don't have to run the fiber optics over there. I mean, there's some options going forward. Um, I don't, just because I, I saw it unfold, I'm not a building expert like, like some of you guys are. But, um, just hearing the problems that they were running into, once you make one change, you gotta make a bunch of changes to accommodate that.
Well, you're not gonna remodel a building, you have two different floor types. That's, that's, that looks stupid.
Right, I mean, it was just all kinds of things like that, so I think if you're going to, um, pull things from here, I think you look at the, I don't know what page it's in the packet, but the soft costs, the, the owner obligations. And then I think you get into the, the running the fiber over there, which is expensive. Um, and then the contingency, you wanna try and keep down, so.
Well, then you gotta be ADA approval for the, for the, uh, you know, the cashier area and stuff like that, so that's other costs and all that. And like I say again, that's why I, I, I emphasize that if we, if we agree to the space size, then we have options of what we wanna put in, right away we need. Um, the object is to give them the ability to buy, buy bulk purchasing and more variety on brands. Um, the space alone will do that by moving the cooler back. Again, do we need the other two coolers? I don't believe we need them right away. One of them might need, but not both of them, or we could add on later on as we see a improvement in, in the sales.
Well, that could be too, I mean, it comes down to the final design as far as interior, with or without the coolers, what does that look like?
Well, knowing.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, if you look, if you look, if you look at the plan, the way that.
The hell you doing with it, I mean, but I think, I, I, I think moving forward where we're at right now, it's not an issue for me, given we're not committing to.
Right.
This number or any, I mean, obviously, it's, it's. We've gone this far to go a little bit further to, further, it's not a huge issue, I think it's. Moving for, moving forward with the suspected, I, I still not happy at all, like you say, with the increase. Um, but nonetheless, if we're not actually committing to anything until we get those final numbers, what are we gonna do? Sit on this and then never get the, the final numbers anyway? I don't know what the hell we're gonna do. I mean, to move forward with the investment that we've done, and once the plans are done, those plans are good forever, in my opinion. I mean, unless codes change and all of a sudden something.
Well, you have, if you wait too many years, if you wait two, five years, you'll have to update coding on it, cause that code's a change. I mean, that's one of the things we're facing now with ADA and stuff like that on this. But I'm just saying to you that, um, if you look, if you look at the plan itself, there's existing cooler to the right, to, you know, to the, to the south side of the building. Um, then you look at the relocated cooler to the, uh, to the east side of, of the building. Uh, and then, then you have the, you know, the, uh, areas there for, you know, for, for, I think, is that wine tasting there, that one area there? Is that what he's doing there now? Okay.
On the west side.
On the west side there.
Well, PJ, I'm here, I'm a couple of.
I'm, I'm confused, you're talking about going to the north and I don't see a lot on these blueprints of going to the north.
Ninety-two.
Well, what we did is move the, 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 uh, the, you know, for the building, the addition, we moved it to the north.
Okay, so it's the same, it's just.
It just moved north so we'd be in compliance.
That's what I think, that's what I was curious. I think we're, page eighty-nine is the original, and this is how I understood it. Eighty-nine is the original design.
Right.
And you can see, obviously, the, the main floor plan is right at zero feet. The ex, expansion originally was only gonna be twelve feet setback from.
Right.
The south road.
Right, so that it was not conforming.
So it's not conforming. So then page ninety-two is the new.
Exactly.
You can see on the top, it says twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
So the building itself, I think, will still be non-conforming.
Yes.
But the.
Addition will be.
Addition of will be.
That's my whole point.
But. Is that our road in front of the water tower, is there anything conforming or non-conforming? Are we twenty-five feet away from that road still?
Um.
To the east?
That, as far as John says, that road, that, all that property was ours, right up to where that fence was with, with the tower, that's all ours.
Okay.
So we didn't have an issue there, you know?
Okay.
So basically, you know, I mean, when I first designed this or came up with the idea, I just, I mean, remember I told you I just made this as big as we could? I didn't know about non-conformity and all this, I just made it as big as we could and then worked our way down. Because the original four sixty-five was so small, it didn't make sense to spend that kinda money and gain really nothing out of it. Cause then I thought to myself, well, we do that, we're gonna come back and have to do it again, add on to that, so why would we do that? So then we started changing the square footages. But then, as you just alluded to, you know, you get out of non-conformity, we don't wanna continue that non-conformity. That's, that's gonna be a mess worse down the road, and some legality issue or somebody bringing up something to a sticker on it will kick us in the rear, in my opinion. So this way, it just moves it over north to make it a twenty-five foot setback.
The original stretch.
Right.
Right. So and I think what Joe was thinking was, you, you have the building, just, you have the space to just blow north. And leave the back of the building and all this.
Well, that's what I thought too, by the way. When I talked to him, that's what I was thinking, but then he went on the academy, this, this up, and it worked out better.
Well, I like that too, but then also John said that he thought shoplifting was an issue because of farther vision, a vision line was bad. And I thought it was easier too, again, you got more of a rectangle, you're not.
I just thought, kick that wall out.
If you have a break, and, and you didn't, when you have a break in the foundation, it's gonna cost you money.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be easier to come out of the north if we could, but he didn't like, he said it wasn't functional for the use.
And he likes this, so that's why I say, I, I recommend that we approve the forty-four by fifty-five size change, the location of it to be in conformity. Uh, approve that extra expense to CAD wise, which is cheaper than under construction and changing this. Um, we don't want, we won't wanna change, we won't wanna be constructing one thing and have to change a grid street, that costs more. But I'm saying, uh, you know that, I mean, you know, changes on site are, are, are gonna be more expensive, so, I'm just saying. And then, and then, and then pretty much, this is on hold anyways till we see what's going on. Because the liquor community funds are one, over one point seven million dollars right now, but we're leaving that as a rainy day fund to protect us in case this thing lingers on longer. So it's not something we need to do immediately, we should do eventually, but when that day comes, I, I don't know. I mean, wouldn't it be nice to be in May and get it closed by November? Yeah, it would be. Uh, if it doesn't work out, we can't do that, then let's table it to next year. And hopefully we want it to deal with COVID-nineteen next year, hopefully.
I'd like to see fiber optics still being back on the forefront though, rather than the back burner, because that was, seemed to really put a long-term function of a. Even like you said, we got a clean, dry show, we can sell all kinds of stuff in a big, you know, dry area.
And maybe, and maybe Kevin, even, even if it comes down to where we don't have two new coolers, we just have one or none right now, we'll have floor space from the pallet drop, or more. So a pallet in the back until we put a cooler, but right now, he's got coolers and all that right now in place. So as you see, there's an existing cooler on that, again, that south side of the building, and then on the, on the east side of the building is the relocation of the, of the cooler. So, uh, as long as we have the space to add on later on, we're fine. Um, and then, you know, I would agree with the fiber optics, by the way, uh, but maybe we can balance the costs as we get closer to doing this.
Well, and actually get an RFP and know what the numbers are.
Joe, what does that, what does that look like, by bringing?
I mean, hopefully that's a big time.
I know that's for, for purchasing continuity and, and communications. But what does that look like, years down the road, we build a new fire station, city hall, you know, together? Or say this building goes over, we sell it and someone kinks a fiber over here, say, screw you. You know what I'm saying? What does that look like? If the fiber comes here and then we take it over to the liquor store and we sell this building, do we still have?
Good point.
Locations down here that.
That's a good point.
I mean, the county runs the fiber optics, I guess it's probably, could be hooked up to this building, I mean, it's in there, right? I don't know what the mechanism is, I don't know how you turn it off, I don't really see it. But I mean, that, you have to get it over there, they're gonna run a directional board, I think underneath forty-seven to get it there, so, um.
Doesn't, you know, and that's what I'm saying, does it pop up here inside the building somewhere? We have a, a communication panel for, for a fiber optics network for a city.
We should put the panel in liquor store, in the news chat.
Right, and that's what I'm saying is.
Maybe that's where it should go, so we sell, cause our actuality is selling this building. We are gonna sell this building. If we're gonna do a city hall with, you know, a fire station, we're selling this building, we're not gonna keep it.
Yeah, we could make, we could.
You want to do that.
We could rent an Alta ISP fifteen for storage.
Anyways, there's still a lot of things to be discussed here before we break around. I could see that.
Yeah.
But, but really, really it's coming down to approving the site, the space that, that we're looking at and, and, and then, and then table it for now. Basically, but I still, and then, then find, I, you know, prioritize what we want at site. Do we want the cooler relocations of the existing coolers? Yes. Do we want more floor space on the main floor? Yes. We want the guilty to buy bulk purchase, so if he doesn't have an extra cooler.
When you go for RFPs, you ask the RFP people to give you a quote, I would assume, wouldn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
And with this, without this.
But he still has to break it down.
I don't know if it's an idea, I have an idea, but.
One of the things that we talked about, and then this might be key when we pour, I don't know, but, um, forget the specific terminology that Miles uses, but I'll call it an add-on. Or this is the base project?
Yeah.
These are the things we want.
Yeah, the options.
Yeah.
Alternates.
Alter, thank you, add alternate, thank you, thank you. Um, so, I mean, that is an option to parse out as much as we can as an add alternate, and then maybe, then maybe we live with three different types of pile. I mean, that's one of, that's an expensive thing.
That's expensive, but at the same time, we, again, we can, we don't have to add the two new coolers on right away, which is expending that twenty-two thousand dollars. We can add one on or none on, he'll, he'll pallet, it, he'll still have beer in the back, he'll still buy bulk purchasing, but it won't be cooled, okay? So have the coolers based, but it'll be limited. Then let's say a year from now or two years from now, we see an increase in sales and we see a need for the extra cooler, we do it. And we, you know, I mean, well, look, we're gonna size the project to our pocketbook, no doubt. It's something we did do with the wastewater, remember when, when we first ran with the wastewater? We said all along, why didn't they size it to our pocketbook? You know, instead of, instead of sizing our pocketbook to the project, which was why we're at where we're at. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're gonna size and, and say what we want. Would I rather stay or hold to that six fifty cap? Yeah, I would. Um, and at the end of the day, it may just end up to be that, we don't know yet. So really, right now, we're asking council, do we agree on the forty-four by fifty-five size? And pay the extra for the amount of the change in the CAD program, so that this building now, the additional being conforming.
I agree with paying for what you've done, obviously, and I don't have an issue moving forward as is.
With the size?
With the size, I mean, it's.
Is that enough for now?
If what we're looking at ideally, it's just that price at the end of the day, I don't know if I'd be able to agree with that, but that's something that, obviously, we don't know nothing until you get R F Ps anyway, it could be astronomical, could be.
Could lower it, so. Times get tougher, you get better bidding.
Right.
That's for sure. Um, and time is everything here, so like I say, we're not desperate to do this immediately, we're not, we're not in a need right now to do this, to make this a destination store as of today. Cause sales are, are finds us now, but it's something that we should think about as, as things change the state, going to the liquor and grocery stores, which I think, after Sunday Liquor got approved, it took so long, the next step is, is grocery stores. And they're gonna push for it, Ivy and the rest of them are gonna push for it, that should come in a lot shorter period of time than it did with the Sunday Liquors, that took well over twenty-plus years to get that. So now this and that opens up the door to the next phase, which is grocery stores, which again, if we ti- if we do right by forty-seven here, the traffic flow here slowing down and making access to our businesses, this could be a destination place, it could be. And we have, again, uh, younger, uh, younger, uh, population coming into our place. So, do we have a consensus on the size and the payment to him? Council? Do we have this then?
Yes.
Okay?
Bigger is better.
Okay, I agree.
So.
We need to make a motion for that for now.
Okay.
Uh, the different size as well as the payment to Miles.
Okay, so, so do I have a motion to approve the fifty, the forty-four by fifty-five size? Well, I gotta make the motion, then you can.
He did.
He did.
He did.
I said, I'm a motion.
You made the motion for it.
I'll second that.
Well, then, then you know what? Well, that's a first.
You do, so he did, he did.
He made the motion.
Yeah, I second it.
Well, I was gonna, okay. I never get the mo- I never get to second a motion. Okay, fine, all, all right, any further discussion? All favors say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, opposed, big carries, thank you. Took away the only time I get to the second time. All right, um, there's no making it open to the public, obviously, um, again, so administrative support.
So honorable members of the council, I did send you a, um, COVID nineteen updates, and these are based on, um, information from everyone from the president down to our police chief and fire chief, as we get them, so. Um, you know, we, uh, at least, I know, uh, Dave, Todd, and myself, and Jason, we, we meet regularly, um, like, at least three times a week. Um, and we just, we have to put some out to council, but it's, you know, we're all kind of learning the same stuff at the same time, and you guys kind of knew some of the operational challenges there. Um, when I put primary stress, stressors, all I meant by that is, the whole COVID nineteen is stressing the fire department and police department by far the most, as far as stress on services. Um, you know, shortages of P P E, rotating staff, um, you know, we had within the city, and I can't say which departments either, we had two people now, um, in self-isolation. So obviously that throws a kink in, in all of the plans and staffing and rotating, and, so you know, they're all.
Are those two from administration, or?
They're within the city staff, we've had, um, we've just had our second person do self-isolation now, per recommendation, so. One of the challenges here is that, um, you know, hypothetically, I'm sick, right, and I go to the doctor, I use VirtuL, and say, you know what? Um, you have some of the symptoms, or all of the symptoms, consider yourself having it, we don't have to test for you. And so else, Elliot, isolate yourself for fourteen days, but we can't confirm that you have it, right?
Yeah, my older son just did that.
Yeah.
Was semiconductor.
Yeah, and so it makes it extremely challenging, especially with these types of departments where they have to be here to work, right, and our chief has to manage the schedules and everything else. Um, you know, they want to implement mandatory, um, N ninety-five masks, but there's only so many of those that we have, um, there's all kinds of logistical issues that they are running into. Um, I think one of the, the main, uh, issues that we ran into is letter D, you know, if you do get into fourteen day quarantine, um, you know, for, we, we priced it out, and if you're talking. Room and board, I mean, you can come up with eleven hundred dollars is the cheapest we can get it for fourteen days for somebody. Um, so that's something that, it's kind of a trend, no, I don't know if other organizations have committed to it yet, other organizations are, um, exploring it. Um, so like, if a first responder has someone at risk at home and they're in quarantine, where are they gonna go, right? Um, the lowest we could, we could price it out to food and lodging was eleven hundred dollars.
So what, where the hell are you putting these people in a hotel type of thing?
There's this like, um, short-term living, I think it's kind of like a hotel.
You mean like they'll live in or whatever, they live for a week or whatever.
Residency type of thing, yeah, they, they have a, um, first responder, gets what's going on right now, it's like fifty-five bucks a night, which includes breakfast, then, um, lunch and dinner every.
What do they get their breakfast?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean, I can't, I, this stuff blows my mind.
I, I work every day, and, and I would not agree with putting people up, if they have to self-quarantine, they need to be at home.
Yeah.
Well, do they have to be confirmed to do it, what are the other stipulations?
That's what my older son did, he went to home, he went to police.
I mean, cause then everybody else that came in contact with within the last five days, or whatever the hell it is, gotta all self-quarantine, then you ain't got a damn police department or fire department.
Well, and that's another layer too, if we don't know, um, there is not a process in place to notify us if someone they dealt with is confirmed.
Right, and that's supposed to hit on all that crap?
We don't know. So, I'm, I'm not even looking for any kind of direction, we're gonna kind of see how some of this stuff unfolds with other agencies, and we're gonna try and get whatever best practice.
Well, I would pray that all of our workers are gonna act honorably. You know what I'm saying, I mean, that's, that's the one thing too, is you got, people love to take advantage of these kind of things, and they're hurt, and I, you know, I.
Cynical bastard.
No, that's just true.
Well, you know, the.
I can't say I didn't take advantage of.
Fourteen days, I mean, even if you went down your basement, shed all your garbage and stuff, and you, you know, bagged it up or whatever, my recommend discusses that at some length, you know, would you wanna be in a hotel for two weeks, or would you wanna be home? I'd wanna be at least in a crappy basement bedroom than in some hotel for two weeks.
Yeah.
Again, you can get rid of, like you said, you shed the garbage you wore in or whatever, but, and then give me, they need a stipend or something to help offset some of that stuff, that's a different gig, but.
I agree, cause my, my older son works for semiconductor.
He's kidding or something.
And, and, uh, he, he, uh, he can, and, uh, he just went back to work today, but he's on two weeks, so what he did was, uh, my dau- my granddaughter and my daughter-in-law stayed upstairs, and he stayed downstairs. And for two weeks, that's where he was, so they basically separated themselves, uh, he's fine, um, and it was the work that told him to do it, to go home for two weeks, but he was in his own house. You know?
And that's, I mean, that's fine too, but I just, I don't understand either, how, how do you, I, I don't know, like, if you're gonna have to self-quarantine, do they have to be confirmed in order to do so? If not, are they just, well, I had a cop, and I was a doctor, and he didn't test me, now I gotta self-quarantine, I mean, I, I think you're, it's a fine line.
Here's, here's the good news.
And I would hope most people want to work, cause I know I'm begging to get back to work.
And we're gonna take this lightly, Joe, we know you have a lot on your plate, and you're dealing with stuff every day, and greatly appreciated, we're not making light of this, and no, no, and I, and I don't think that, and I think, I mean, this is highly complex, I think, hey. Uh, it could not be more difficult.
Obviously, you don't wanna spread it to residents and blah, 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 especially in those situations.
But you want to be safe and strong.
But you also have to consider some of these, some of these people may not have a house that works, I mean, if you're gonna have to.
That's possible.
If you don't have room that you can have a basement and a cooking area and stuff.
Right.
If not, it doesn't do you any good to self-quarantine your home, cause you can't.
Well, maybe what we, maybe what we do is, when the situation arises, we look at it case by case basis, and, and check it out that way, so, if they can quarantine themselves properly in their own house, that's one thing.
Well, I, I do trust Coleman enough too, to where he can make the call if it comes down to it, I mean, he's not gonna just, if you don't feel something.
Well, he's not gonna give a credit card to a hotel, I know that.
Don't do that.
No. He said that, so before we, cause this is the new, uh, what we do, that's what health cities are talking about, right?
Right.
So what, uh, you, you guys have the police and fire chiefs, they did internal polls, see if this is even applicable to anybody, and I think it was less than five people said that, that just due to whatever circumstances are at home. They would want strongly consider it, so we're long wings away from it ever happening, I think, hopefully, hopefully it doesn't happen, but, um. We know that it's not everybody, and it's not gonna be multiple times, we know that there's just a select few for whatever their situation is, um, that may be an option, but. You know, as you can see by some of these things, you know, like I said, the first responders don't even get word yet if they're exposed to somebody, they won't release that information, and so. You know, if they're running out of N ninety-five masks, that's the shortest supply, I mean, they have some, but that's not gonna last forever, um, just all kinds of issues going on, but.
Well, yeah, I, I think you have to just take it as it comes about, look at it as a case by case basis, and deal with it as we deal with it, I mean, I, I don't, you can't blanket it for the same time.
No, you know, obviously, I mean, I'm not trying to keep them from being safer, go wherever they have to do, I just, it's just such a.
Well. Where I work, there's a, there's a lot of questions about, did I get it from work?
Right.
You know, if you come in and you, and you have a temperature, they're going to send you home. So, am I, I'm at work, now is that workman's comp, or is that my sick time, you know? Um, if I'm home and I say, hey, I have symptoms.
You're making an accusation, you got a.
I'm gonna be self-quarantined, they're like, okay, you're using your time, because you're sick, you know? So, there are a lot of questions about that, that I know Sherwin, I can call them today and say, hey, I'm sick. In three days, they're gonna say, hey, are you symptom free? If I'm symptom free for three to four days, I can come back to work, not fourteen, you know, so all those things have already changed, um. So, I think. You throw it out there, hey, you know, we're gonna put you up in a hotel, and we're gonna feed you every meal that you want, somebody's gonna say they got a fever, and you're gonna pay them their, their hourly rate, you know, forty hours. You, you.
Well, we wanna be right, we wanna be having taken advantage of, so.
Right.
We don't want.
So. Some of the jobs are inherent, there is an inherent danger and risk in those, and I've done them all, and you gotta kind of put it back on yourself. If you're sick, stay at home, you know, hey, I'm, I'm symptom free for three days, Sherman County's like, okay, you can come back to work now. Because they don't know, they don't even know if workman's comp's gonna pay for a COVID out or not.
That's another.
They're applying, but there's no guarantees.
This is so new.
It's new to everyone, so they're coding it at work, they're coding any time off, um. They are applying for workman's comp for people that, we had a guy that was, uh.
Unless you had con- confirmed cases of any people there, whether they were residents or, uh, workmen.
We had, we had someone that their sister was in contact with somebody on the outside that was later.
That's a good one.
That's like four times removed.
Yeah, right.
And they're like, see you later. I don't have any symptoms.
Right.
So, after three days, they're like, okay, you can come back to work. The, the fourteen day quarantine, it.
That could be a huge.
Yeah, it, it hasn't really got to that point.
Cause I know my son, I mean, you know, after a week, he could tell, I mean, it was very awake, he knew, you know, he said, are you coughing, have a fever? No, you know, and then it just became, the second week was complete boredom, and he, he drowned himself, and that's it, and he actually wanted to go back to work.
I, I just feel like.
You know, those are things that, not to make light of it, you know, but.
If there's nowhere for them to go, their house ain't set up or whatever, and that's some.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we have a staff that's gonna abuse it, I mean, there may be those ones, but that, that's why we have department heads and Joe to check it balance, okay? And if they have any questions, then they bring it to us, so I, I don't think.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I would, I would have some questions, in my own opinion, if it was the old council and the way that they did things, I'm sorry, but I would. I've been around them long enough to see how they did business, and all the packets I read.
Looking ahead.
Maybe, I may be looking ahead, but I also know, from learning from the past, I've seen mistakes made, so to me, would I see some issues there or some questions in my mind? Yes, you know, um, we've had enough experience around those old time thinking, to see that those were issues and questions or vulnerability, I'll put it like that, there was vulnerability here. Um, so to me, I don't think we have that in place now, I think we have a better staff, better department heads, and a better council in place right now, so, I would leave it to Joe and the department heads to make the decision, and if you have questions, you bring it to the council.
Yeah, for sure, and I think that's the best way to handle, we don't know that we're ever gonna get there, we don't wanna get there, uh, just.
But this changes daily with him up there.
Right, and these are the things that are so complex and that are out there right now that we're working on, and like I said, we wanted to give you guys an update, but it's, you know, we don't wanna just, keep sending the same thing all there's a day, I mean, cause it always changes, and it's different for, as it pertains to us or.
Trump comes out every day, he can call me every day.
So.
So is, uh, Walt.
Just kind of wanted to keep you guys updated.
Okay.
How are you doing?
I'm all right, I could use a haircut, I can tell you that.
How's the rest of your staff doing?
I would say you have a staff here that is dying to get back to work, um, I think everyone's over sitting at home, from what I understand, so, everyone wants to just get back in their normal routine, and, um.
And you are rotating out as originally prescribed, or you prescribed the, yeah, everybody takes a turn coming in and.
Yep, I think you're gonna see, uh, the public works has been rotating too, they're probably going to ramp up and just kind of go full bore pretty soon here, cause it's gonna come to where they just need to get their.
I know they're street cleaning here today.
Well, they don't, they don't deal with the public per se really.
Right, it's more affecting each other is the scary part, I think, or not scary, it's the, the risk here part. Um, so, yeah, everyone wants to just get back in the normal swing of things, and, I don't know.
One to Subway, one to Target Johns, one to McDonald's, just. I know Public Works isn't here, but can I ask a question about, did you see some of the cities are, uh, you know, people that people are throwing all kinds of debris now in the sewer systems now, with the, you know, lack of toilet paper, or just, just plain ignorance? Or both, but are we having any pump issues or any transfer station issues, or?
I had not heard anything other than the normal maintenance of the house, I haven't been conveyed any information.
I don't know, I've never been at this, but the. Washing my mouth. Okay, thank you.
I mean, the way, the way it is right now, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, I mean, it's all a new norm, you know, so, we'll just have to adapt and adjust, I mean, I can only commend staff and, and department heads for. Doing a great job that you're doing, and, and, uh, we're here to support you, I mean, uh, you know, that's all I can tell you, I mean, I get, I get weekly updates from Dave Schmidt, um, uh, Joe Coleman, uh, picks us. Uh, so to me, um, you know, I mean, we're there to support you, like I say, and thank you for the frontline job you're doing, I mean, it's a tough situation, you know? Because you may not get it from somebody here, but you may get it from somebody down the road, I mean, I went to Walmart, uh, last week, and I had a mask on, I went to the nurse, I had a mask on, but I have an immune situation where I need to do that. But, do I think a mask is a bad idea? Hell no, I don't think a mask is a bad idea, um, I see some people with gloves on, some with a mask on, uh, better be safe than sorry, but now you're seeing Plexiglas at county market. My wife won't, won't let me do grocery shopping winter, cause I can't go in that store, cause I'm old, I'm susceptible, but I mean, Walmart's doing the same thing, you know, Cubs are, so it's a changing world. The question I have is when this thing all dies down is, how long will it take to get back to a norm, or is there never gonna be a norm as we knew it? That could be possible, you know, you don't know, so, and then of course you get the, the different news every day from the feds and the Torrego stations, and, you know, it's like my wife was saying recently, last week to me, that she was just talking to somebody, they were talking about polio. Polio, when it was out, was a big deal, it was huge back then, but the difference between polio years ago and today is social media. That's the one difference in play they didn't have years ago when polio was here, and then you get to social media, and you get to news stations, and everybody's playing to what benefits them, it seems to me, and then party line views and all that crap, instead of just dealing with the damn issue, let's get a vaccine. And then the day you hear the man in the White House talk about a vaccine, that could be eighteen months down the road before it even gets to us, so is there hope for a vaccine?
Andrew Clark.
Well.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see if that.
But then, Dave, Dave Schmidt told me that he talked to some doctors who said, if you don't know the dose, and you take too much of that, you'll die, so you'll solve your COVID nineteen problem, cause it'll be tested.
Doctor, give me the right dose.
So, all I'm saying to you is, I, I think, I think the reassurances we have in place, the city, I know, I know you're putting this on the website and all that, but once again, um, staff needs to know that we appreciate what they're doing, and they have the support of the council, that's a given, so. Just let us keep knowing us, what you need, and what, what you need from us, and then keep up the good job, and hopefully, like I say, that when this norm, when this whole thing dies down, we'll get back to what we know as a norm, so it's a new norm, I mean. I'd like to see the Plexiglas go down, and being able to talk to people, and, you know, it's like my son said, I never knew I had these many neighbors, now that they're walking their dogs and going outside, I mean, that's just the way it is today, it's just different. Um, but I don't know if I agree with the fourteen day quarantine versus the, you're gonna know if you got it. Um, and he had it, and like I say, within five days, he knew he didn't have it, but he had to, they, they wouldn't let him back to work, but he did the Zoom, he did the video stuff, which, I'm thinking at the next meeting, we'll probably be doing a Zoom. So just be prepared for that, I did this meeting tonight because one department head, you know, basically two of you, and then Dave, uh, and I figured it was less than ten, um, and we're spaced out, but the next meeting, we may just have to do it on a video. So, be prepared until this thing dies down, so.
Just think, got a camera? All sorts of topics.
I know I FaceTimed myself back.
Our department head, he's, he works pretty slick.
Yeah, and, um, so I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're pulling permits and doing the things we need to do, and liquor sales are up there, so I mean, we're doing the best we can of what we got, and we're following the CDC and the M D H, and I think that's wise. Well, I know there's eight states in the union that are not doing anything right now, which I think is ridiculous, and that's, and, and Florida just passed it last week, which, you got people in New York going to Florida, you got New Orleans is a hotspot, three hotspots, and they're coming out from New York to get there, and then it's mainly in all this stuff, so, I mean, I'm glad we're up here, to be honest with you. So, um, anyway, Joe, you have anything else on your report?
Nope.
That's okay. Okay, so let's do council member reports here, um, Joe, I'll start with you.
Uh, I just had someone on Curious Kate that contacted you, and they said they had a call to you. Uh, I just had somebody on Curious Kate, they contacted you and they said they had a college here or something about, uh, it was a hundred and fifty acre deal off Ambassador. I think that was the split and I'm not sure, but I guess it's like the Ambassador or something. Sixty thirty-two, um, Ambassador or something. I'm thinking that was the one and I couldn't remember off the top of my head. It was somebody tagged, I think being Sarah on Facebook. I, I don't know if it was you or not.
What was their, what was their question?
It might have actually been Rob, cause I think, I think Sarah did it, but I don't remember. Um, anyway, it was something about a hundred and fifty acre. They're just wondering what was going on with it. And, uh, something about others in public here lately. I didn't know if it was the, they mentioned Ambassador, so I didn't know if it was the plot with the private park field or.
Wasn't that that gentleman?
That was the nursery who was, what the.
That's what I was.
Landscaping company that moved here for me to know.
Once they gave you the address and was a little more specific, I said, I think that was just the split.
The split. Remember he's gonna have that one road?
Yeah.
There's a P and Z that I went to.
So I responded back and then I gave your information supposedly, supposedly called you and left a message.
I haven't heard from that property yet.
Well, it wasn't that property, it was some, somebody else, yeah. So, I don't know, they were just wondering what was going on and I just kinda, off the top, except if it's the one I'm thinking of, I think this is what happened. But I haven't been doing a whole lot of anything.
Okay. Okay, Kevin?
No, sir, I have nothing to report other than to give thanks for the staff and everybody involved at, uh, interesting times that we are in.
I agree. Sarah?
I wanna echo all the things you started bringing heads and the, uh, extra hours that we know that you're putting in to help make this as smooth as possible for all of us. Um, please be patient with us, but please contact us. Don't, don't hesitate. But we, we, most of us are sitting at home waiting for emails to come in, so, um, and then, yeah, just stay home if you can. Please, please, please stay home.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um, I haven't done much, uh, the last week. I just worked five days in a row and I'll have the next seven off. And next week I'll have seven days in a row, so if we're gonna have a video, um, I'll need to get that set up sometime this week. Um, cause next week's seven twelves. Um, other than that, yes, stay safe, um, support your local restaurants. Um, go eat your food. They do takeout. I would hate for, for this, uh, pandemic to, um, ruin some of our, our restaurants around St. Francis. So support them, they are doing, uh, takeout.
Yep.
Um, help keep them, uh, afloat during these, uh, dangerous times.
And the drive-throughs are active.
Drive-throughs are active and most other restaurants are, uh, takeout and delivery. So please support your local businesses.
Thank you. Um, again, like I said before, I wanna thank staff. It's a, it's a situation that, um, is basically guesswork. You know, it's like guessing what date of days would have been tomorrow versus today. So, um, uh, but know, know fully, um, and I can't emphasize enough to, to Kate and, and Joe and the rest of your staff, council's here. Okay, we're supportive, we're working with you. I mean, I, I've been told, um, by some other people in other cities that they've had some difficulties working with their councils on the issues, trying to be more, uh, uh, hesitant to do things that need to be done. We're not like that. So we will do what you need to support you and, uh, get the city to maintain until we can only have a normal life again. Um, as far as, um, uh, being safe and all that, I, I'd say to people, um, you know, wear a mask if necessary, if you feel it's necessary to wear one. Like for me, with my immune system, I need to, uh, gloves if you feel necessary. Don't feel embarrassed. I mean, it's, it's, it's better to be safe than sorry in this type of day and age. And, um, um, I mean, I, I agree with the, with the, the way we're doing things in the state and all that, the other forty-two states that have done this because it stops the progression, because this could be a wildfire if it gets out of control. And that's, that's, that's the scary part about it. You know, on a zero to ten, I might rate this a sixty-eight scale. Uh, you got a million through the world, but that's million based on seven point five-three billion people. You know, a thousand million is a billion. So this is basically a small percentage, but still it's a lot because it's being contained. Once it's not contained, it could end up to be millions of billions. So, um, I think the precautions that our, our governors and, and mayors and other places are thinking is a good thing. I think what we've done here is a good thing. Um, but I think once again, it's common sense, you know, wash your hands, uh, use wipes, uh, 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 you know, cover your mouth when you're coughing or sneezing, which is a common thing you should be doing anyway. Um, so just take, you know, common sense approaches and, and, and deal with it. But I mean, don't, you know, it's like when I talked to Todd last week, one thing I'm glad with the police is they're maintaining their presence. Because I, I've said this before, downside of a pandemic is panic, okay? Um, you got people buying ammo and guns. For what? I have no idea, you know? Apocalyptic what? You know, I mean, is this something that will hap, is this, is this a, a situation we have to deal with? Yes. Uh, is it the end of the world? I don't believe that. Um, but can it go farther? Yes, it can, if we don't take the precautions and use common sense. So I'm hoping that common sense will prevail here and, uh, I know that King's County Market was, I mean, questions on returns. They're not taking returns, cause people were trying to buy what they all were stocked on back. They're not doing that. And again, they have the Plexiglas in place. I mean, people are ridiculous. You bought it, you own it. That's the way it is. So, um, uh, King County Market is doing its best it can. I went to Walmart, they were out of rubbing alcohol and other things and all that. So you do the best you can. So if you don't get that exact thing you want, you get something second to what you want. You'll survive. You know what I mean? You won't go starving. So, um, uh, as Sarah alluded to, uh, with the council, with, with the social media out there and the public, you know, we, you have a council in place that's not hiding anything. You wanna know something, ask us. That's the best thing I can tell you. You got a question? Ask the question. You know, that's why I put out a same-day post about forty-seven, so that people know what we're doing. We didn't close down our, our idea of forty-seven, we just closed down the idea of what Men Dap wanted to do at forty-seven. Hopefully, we'll have a sit, a sit, a sit-down with the commissioner and reason and common sense will prevail and we'll come out with a better plan in the long run, hopefully. Um, as I said also, if you read that post, I said, even if it takes a little longer to do it right, then this will become detrimental to our city is the key. Because that road out there is our version of one sixty-nine, four ninety-four, thirty-five and sixty-five. That's our version. It's important to the vital, vitality and, and blood of our city. So, um, hopefully we can, but again, we're gonna have a sit-down. When that's gonna happen? I don't know. Could be come May, June, July. So is this gonna be kicked back? Yeah, it's gonna be kicked back, but I myself would rather have it kicked back so that it's done right than done wrong. Um, because once we have it, we're living with it. And we already know what pain for something we didn't want cost us. We don't wanna do that again. We wanna learn that lesson and, and, and size this project to what our pocketbook can afford and what benefits us. Not what, if they were to hold the brakes up on that, we're in a different situation, but we'll learn, we've learned from that to hold our brakes, put our brakes on. So, um, is there any other business that we need to do tonight? Uh, that, I wanna thank Kate and staff and Dave and everybody, Joe and that, and council for coming out. And at seven thirty-seven on Monday, April sixth, I will adjourn the meeting.